Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name is Wahida Kara, and I'm a volunteer with the Smiley Jamaat Kana End Center. We will get started with the Sugar Land City Council Candidates Forum 2022. May I request the honorary secretary of the Smiley Council for the Southwestern United States, Irfan Ali, to offer the opening remarks? Thank you.
Thank you, Wahida. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Smiley Council for the Southwestern USA and our partners, Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters Houston, and Fox 26 Houston, I would like to welcome each of you to the 2022 Sugar Land City Council Forum here in person, as well as those of you who are joining us online. This forum -- thank you. We have some energy in this room this morning. This forum includes candidates for Sugar Land City Council at-large positions one and two, and it is our honor to welcome them here at the Smiley Jamaat Kana End Center. I am particularly excited that we're able to host this forum once again in person at the Smiley Jamaat Kana End Center. In keeping with the Shia Islamic tradition, the center, an essential contributor to the fabric of Sugar Land community fosters an appreciation of pluralism and for enhancing relationships, mutual exchanges amongst diverse peoples, faith communities, civic organizations, and civil society. As such, it is a fitting venue for the Sugar Land City Council Candidates Forum. I would also like to take this opportunity and recognize the forum's editorial committee, a diverse group of individuals who have worked to analyze the issues which affect the Sugar Land community. Their involvement has ensured that this forum highlights a spectrum of issues that will help inform our decisions as we approach early voting and election day. Lastly, I would like to introduce you to our moderators for the forum this morning, Mary Jane Mudd and Greg Grugan. Mary Jane is a member of the 2022-2024 Texas State League of Women Voters Board of Directors. She joined the League of Women Voters of Houston in 2016 and was honored to be selected to serve as its president from 2019 through 2021. She has long been an advocate for voter empowerment, women's rights, and the rights of the disabled, speaking on these topics regularly at local and national events. She's a longtime resident of Houston and is married with three children. We are delighted, Mary Jane, that you could join us today. Also with us as moderator is Greg Grugan. Welcome, Greg. This is Greg's 37th year of news reporting, with the last 21 spent at Houston's Fox 26. Along the way, Greg's work has been honored with hundreds of journalism awards, including 28 Lone Star Emmys. In addition to his extraordinary reporting duties, Greg hosts the weekly political discussion show What's Your Point?, which is in its sixth year and airs every Sunday morning at 7:00 a.m. With that, and on behalf of the Smiley Council for the Southwestern USA and our fellow partners, we hope you enjoy the forum and find it to be informative and valuable. I would be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that early voting runs from April 25th through May 3rd, and Election Day is May 7th. So please don't forget to exercise your civic duty and vote. At this time, may I please request the candidates to take their seats on the stage? Thank you.
Today, we have with us Sugar Land City Council candidates for at-large positions one and two. As a note, all the candidates who are running for these positions on the Sugar Land City Council were invited to participate in the Candidates Forum. For position one, we will have William Ferguson and Larry Laboue, and for position two, we'll have Farah Ahmed and Scott Schultz. The questions for the forum were identified and reviewed in consultation with an editorial committee composed of a group of Sugar Land residents, with input provided by the League of Women Voters of Houston. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank our editorial team for their insight into the issues affecting Sugar Land.
Today's forum will last approximately 75 minutes. The discussion will consist of an opening 90 seconds offered by each candidate, followed by pre-selected questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the majority of questions presented to them. However, certain questions will have a 90-second response time, and we will identify that at the time of the question. Unless specified, please assume the question has one minute allotted for response time. At the end of the forum, each candidate will be given one minute for their closing remarks. Now, given the nature of this event, and to avoid any distractions, we kindly request the audience members to please ensure your cellphones are on mute, and do your best to remain seated and hold your applause until the end of the forum. Lastly, please note that the event is being streamed online. Shameless plug, Fox 26. Let's have a great one.
Okay, let's begin. We will start with William Ferguson. Please introduce yourselves and let us know what qualities make you the best candidate for city council. Now, each candidate will have 90 seconds.
Good morning. Thank you for being here, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to the people. Folks, those of you that don't know me, my name is William Ferguson. I have lived in the Sugar Land area now for 15 years. I've served as your council member for a year and a half. I believe I'm right for this because my entire life has been service to the community, service to you. Even though you've been silent most of my time as a police officer and most of my time as a council member, I want you to know your best interest is in my heart. And if you've watched my life and you've watched how I served, you will realize Sugar Land is sweet today because we always work together, we live together, and we serve together. So I look forward to serving you in the future. Thank you for your consideration, and again, thank you for the opportunity here today.
Okay, next, Larry.
Good morning. My name is Larry Laboue. I appreciate everybody being here, and I want to thank the Smiley Council for putting this down. I've been in, actually, in First Colony for 32 years and just recently moved to new territory. So I've been out here quite a while. I'm involved in numerous nonprofits, six to be exact. I've raised a lot of money out here from different nonprofits, have a management degree, manage my own business, manage other businesses. So very qualified to step up and represent the city of Sugar Land, and I appreciate everybody's vote, appreciate y'all coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Farah?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Farah Ahmed. I am a 32-year resident of Sugar Land. I've raised my family here. I own my own small business. I'm an attorney, and I've also had the privilege of working for a tech fund. For me, community involvement is very important. I've served on the boards of many nonprofits, including the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce and Child Advocates. I've also served with the city in terms of being a commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission, looking at the vision and development for this city. I'm very proud to be here today. I think it's so important that all candidates come to these kinds of forums to be able to answer the questions for the citizens and to be able to show their vision of what they want to see for Sugar Land in the future.
Thank you, Farah. Okay, Scott?
Good morning. And thank you for your time. Thank you for being here, and thank you for this opportunity. For those that don't know me, I'm Scott Schultz. I'm a 26-year resident of Sugar Land, and I spent 28 years with the Sugar Land Police Department. Started off as a patrol officer, and I spent the last 10 years as the assistant chief. I say that because when I retired in 2020, people would always ask me, "Well, do you miss being a cop?" And no, I don't. I never missed being a police officer. But what it took me a little bit of time to realize is that the biggest part that I missed about that was having the opportunity to help people in the community. I still get the phone calls. People still call me for help and advice, but I don't have that avenue. And so one of the biggest reasons that I threw my name in the hat is because I spent over half my life serving the citizens of Sugar Land, and I'm no longer doing that and realized that it's a part of my life that I really want to gain back. Thank you.
Each candidate will be allotted 90 seconds for their answer to this question. If elected, what are the top three things you would like to accomplish while serving on city council and why? Larry Laboue, we start with you.
Major three things in city council is, one would be infrastructure, making sure we have everything in place, our buses are running right, we have enough of them. We don't have enough transport in the city right now. I think we need to beat that up. The flooding, we've started working on that. We need to continue working on that. The drainage, the businesses, we need to bring these businesses back. They've been down. We need to bring them back up, work with them, whether it's management, whether it's reaching out to them, and figuring out what it is that they need to continue as businesses, some of the ones that are gone down. We need to bring them back up. Same thing with the residents. Continue what we're doing, continue the safety that we have right now. It's excellent, and we just need to continue that, make sure we have the leaders and the people in the right positions to do that. Thank you.
Farah Ahmed?
I think for the city, especially coming out of COVID, I think the business community, the economy is really top priority. We really need to attract technology and innovation jobs to Sugar Land and attract young professionals. And the reason why is, you know, we love this community the way it is, but you don't want a community to become a bedroom retirement community. You do want to attract families and young professionals. That grows your tax base, that keeps your cost of services low, and it also keeps your taxes low. The second thing that's more important to me also, and is a priority with many people that I talk to, is public safety. We need to make sure that we fund our public safety well. We have the lowest crime rate. I want to make sure we keep it that way. That means giving competitive wages, that means funding technology for crime prevention. It's very important. And the third thing is being engaged with the community. I was mentioning about coming out of COVID. There's a lack of disconnect, and people want that connection again with their government representative. And I think, you know, this is a volunteer position. We need to be connected with the residents, and the fact that I serve on the different nonprofits and stay connected with different organizations, that's so important. And I tell you why. How are you going to know what's going on in your community unless you're involved in your community?
Scott Schultz?
So mentioning COVID and coming out of a pandemic, our lives and our world has changed in ways that we may have never even foreseen it happening. And so I think a big step that we need to take as a community now is to look at where we were pre-COVID, look what COVID has done to change us, and make sure that what we're doing is the right thing to do, and it's the appropriate thing to do. I'm very big, obviously, on public safety, fire, police, EMTs, and I'll even throw Public Works in there because if you have a water leak or your water main breaks at 3:00 in the morning, those guys are going to be heroes to you. So maintaining the structure that we currently have within those departments is crucial to the city. Also, mobility and infrastructure are big items that I pay attention to. 6:00 on Highway 6 and 59 is a nightmare. And before we go and develop more areas or we build anything, we really need to pay attention to traffic studies. What is it going to do to the existing residents of the city? How is this going to burden them? So those are some of my top positions.
William Ferguson, top three things you would like to accomplish?
Thank you. There are three things that every single one of us want, three things. Safety, we want to be able to live our lives, we want to be able to enjoy our families, we want to be able to go to work, we want to be able to go out and have fun, but we have to do it safely. That's one thing. The second thing we all want is to be respected. There's nothing worse than being disrespected, regardless of your culture, regardless of your skin color, regardless, you want to be respected. The third thing is you want opportunities. Everyone wants the same great opportunities. So as a council member, someone representing all of the people, those are my three focuses. Now, with that said, mobility is certainly an issue in an area that's growing. Not that Sugar Land itself is developing new homes and all this that's causing this. We live in a beautiful area that's causing some mobility issues. We have committees, we have programs and plans in place to deal with all that, as new projects are starting soon on university expansion, things like that. The outdoor venues that we don't have are few and far between, but we're adding them as fast as we can so people can enjoy their families and their friends. All of these pieces that are already in place, we're just going to continue to build on those so that we protect safety, respect, and every opportunity that we can. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Farah. What do you believe the city council's role should be in facilitating collaboration among the many stakeholders working on behalf of Sugar Land and its residents?
I think the city always has an obligation to set up an infrastructure where you have input from residents and using technology for that, too. Right now, we have lots of boards and commissions, and we set up task force. So I think that's very critical that when we pivot to new programs and new policies, that we engage with all our residents, using technology also and lots of, of course, in-person options. And I think having the representative go out into the community is very critical, and being involved in the different community programs and events is very critical. And I think keeping that line of connection and I think being seen in the community, residents are really craving for that connection again after the break from COVID. And I think this is so important in making sure that we keep our community together and making sure that we are united in some of the programs and some of the amazing projects that we have for the future of Sugar Land.
Thank you. Scott, what do you believe city council's role should be in facilitating collaboration?
So public-private partnerships have always been huge in Sugar Land, and they've always been immensely successful whenever the city can actually work with the community and with organizations to go ahead and fulfill a dream. Look at the Space Cowboys baseball field. Look at Smart Financial. When the city works with the community and other individuals, it seems that there's always a positive result because the city has the voice and the knowledge of what the residents want. The other entities actually have the infrastructure to make something happen. And so when you put those two together, you get the best of both worlds. You're getting something as wonderful, a smart financial center, and also, you know, it's something that the citizens want. So I think it's huge.
Okay, thank you. William, your turn.
What we have in place right now to blend both private and public is an organization that is called our EDC, our Economic Development Team. And this team is working day in and day out to build or bridge between the public and the private best interests. And it really does work, so I'm going to brag for a moment. That is why we have Smart Financial, that is why we have Town Center, that is why we have our airport, that is why we have Constellation Field, and the list goes on and on. And even things that I can't talk about today that are going to make you guys so happy soon, I'm telling you now, the work is being done every day, day in and day out, and it's not done just by that team, but it's done by council, and it's done by our community in the form of 101 classes, in the form of every bit of relationship that we build every day. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Okay, Larry, what are your thoughts on this question?
Well, I think a lot of it's in place, like they said, the Constellation Field, Smart Financial, we've done a great job in that, but we need to continue to reach out. We need to continue to reach out to not only the residents, find out the needs and what they need, the businesses as well, find out what's going on in the businesses and what their needs are. Continue to communicate with everybody out there and see what's going on, what is needed. The infrastructure, I mean, everything. We're doing a lot of building, there's a lot going on, but there's more to be done. With what's going on at Smart Financial, I know there's more going on there, and it's going to continue to go on there. But we need to reach out to each individual and the businesses as well to figure out what's going on and what we need to do and go. Thank you.
Taxes are top of mind for many families and businesses, especially this time of year. How do you believe the city council could demonstrate good stewardship of the tax dollars Sugar Land receives from its residents? And Scott Schultz, I'm starting with you.
So the city has always been very fiscally responsible. I've had the opportunity to work on numerous budgets with my time with the city. I've had the opportunity to be with workshops. The city currently is very meticulous on what the taxpayers' money gets spent on. Frivolous items are not purchased. I mean, we just don't do it. It has to be a necessity. But going forward, as the economy is taking a downward turn, everything's costing more, it costs all of us more at the gas pump, at the grocery store, I think we have to be extremely cautious about taxes, about raising taxes and what we do with those funds because everybody is going to have to do a little more or do with a little less, and that includes the city. The city is the same way. And if you get to the point to where something has to be disregarded, find those items and cut them out.
William Ferguson, we're talking about good stewardship of the tax dollars.
One of my favorite questions, so I'll need an hour. But I will tell you, as a sitting council member, we have sat through the processes that are exhausting because we are trying to establish what is essential. That is not something that's done often in government, but what is essential, and then what is what we want. But within all of it is value. So Sugar Land, to brag again for a moment, we're at 0.3465 tax rate in our city. We're able to do that because of our commercial, our retail assistance, if I may. We're a powerhouse of property value. And so what we've learned is if we can focus on what is essential, our mobility, our drainage, what is essential, the taxpayers are thrilled. And if I may, in 2019, they offered us $91 million, and we have been wise and not even spent the $91 million yet. So we are being essential focused.
Larry Laboue?
I think right now, we're doing a good job at the tax dollars. We really need to start watching what we're doing with it, though, for future, not just today. I mean, there's a lot of wants and needs, but there's a lot of things we want, but what do we really need? Those are the things we need to look at, the things we need today and the things we need five to 10 years from now. And that's why we need to start spending our tax dollars. Mobility is huge around here. Getting from place to place, we have a lot of venues we have to drive to. We need to look at different mobility in order for our residents to get there without having to get in their car possibly. I mean, there's a lot of things we need to look at for future, and that's where we need to start looking. I mean, nobody knew COVID was coming. We always got to look for the future. Thank you.
Farah Ahmed?
Definitely for the city budget, looking at how we spend our money. Our infrastructure is always a top priority on the budget, and I think that's what we need to look at, is what are our priorities and spend that money wisely. The key thing also, you're a little bit mentioning in your question, is about tax relief. I mean, city council can look at exemptions for those with limited income and even raising those exemptions. But the best, and well, I would say the challenging thing that the city faces is even though it's getting that revenue because the taxes have gone up because of appraisal, it's also challenged with expensive costs. Your costs have also gone up, too, to do all those projects that you want. And I think one of the best things the city can do is attract jobs and companies. Once you continue to grow your tax base, that is the best way in terms of making your tax dollars work and also giving some of that tax relief to residents.
Okay, question five. And each candidate will be allotted 90 seconds for their answers to this one. We're going to start with you, William Ferguson. Drainage and flooding are huge issues throughout the Gulf Coast region, and Sugar Land is no exception. What should the city council's role be in working to address these issues for the city's residents?
Again, as a council member, we're currently addressing our drainage issues, and I say that with a sense of joy. So the bond funding that we received in 2019, we have spent not all, but nearly all, on drainage projects. So whether you live in Sugar Creek, whether you live in Greatwood, wherever you live in Sugar Land, all of the data collected from Harvey, from the May flood, goodness gracious, from every recent weather event that has been brutal on our area, not just Sugar Land, but been brutal on our area, we use that data to focus those funds. And I'm proud to say our most recent increase of one cent last year for this year's budget included the remainder of our drainage funding for bonds. And that is why we are less concerned, not that we're not concerned, but we are less concerned and worried about our drainage issues because we are currently dealing with them all. And so it's a great feeling. Doesn't mean we won't have an issue later, but it's a great feeling to know we're already ahead of that. There are issues, even solutions being dealt with towards the river, thankfully with the work of our local Lids and also some groups further north in Simonton. So we're already working on our concerns about drainage, and we're not going to stop because the weather doesn't seem to stop in giving us a break. So that's what we're doing now. Thank you.
Larry Laboue, your answer to this question?
Thank you. Yes, I think we need to continue what we're doing. We need to really work with the Corps of Engineers for the drainage, continue in the neighborhoods like we're doing. The flooding was huge. We really need to look at it. And the Brazos River, it's something we really need to look at. It's changing directions every time we turn around with these floods. We didn't expect the thousand-year flood, but it came. So we really need to look at this, and we need to look for the future as to what we're doing with this continually, picking up where we left off before the floods and expanding that and reaching out to, like I said, all these different entities, the LID and Corps of Engineers, to help us out with the structure of all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Farah Ahmed?
Now, during Harvey, Sugar Land faced a tremendous, tremendous challenge. I think we had more flooded homes in our concentrated area in Sugar Land than any other place in Fort Bend County. And we have asked citizens to come to this wonderful city, and their biggest investment is their home. And we always have to make flooding and drainage a priority. Now, we are working on drainage issues with storm drains that are expanding and allowing more of regular rainfall to be drained effectively. But when we're talking about these huge weather events, we have to collaborate with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Lids. And I think the city of Sugar Land should continue to be proactively working on those issues. You're talking about new pumps being installed to really prevent a Harvey-like repeat in Sugar Land area, and we need to do this for our residents. This is our number-one priority.
Okay, Scott Schultz?
So as William mentioned, I'm proud to say that the city is actively addressing drainage issues throughout the entire city, and they're moving on very quickly, and it's being handled appropriately. I was there when these studies were done, as far as which areas were hit the hardest. And then I was there when they, when we put the plan together on how we were going to address them. With that being said, that doesn't mean a new issue is not going to arise tomorrow. So while we are fixing the problems of the past, we need to be cognizant and stay tuned and look for problems of the future, especially with, you know, more development comes in, things change, the landscape changes, all that changes drainage. So it's, while we are working to fix the problems of the past, we need to pay attention to where we don't create ourselves problems in the future.
Like many cities, Sugar Land has aging commercial districts that may be ripe for repurposing or redevelopment. If elected, what's your vision for how redevelopment of commercial districts might fit into the city's overall growth plan? Larry Laboue, we're starting with you. Larry Laboue, we're starting with you.
I think that's something we really need to look at because it's happening now. I mean, we have areas particularly like in front of Sugar Creek that's aging. We need to really look at those and come up with a plan to redevelop these things, whether it's a management system that some of the others have already done. We have a management system in town center that takes care of that and brings people into the town center with different activities. And the commercial properties there benefit from it. So we need to look at some of those things. We really need to refocus on that because it is aging now. We're over 110,000 people, and there's not a lot more room to grow as far as residential. We've got about maybe 3%. So we really need to start focusing on our businesses and repurpose some of those as soon as possible. Thank you.
Farah Ahmed, what's your point?
This is something we've heard for many, many years about redevelopment and how challenging it is for the city. You know, we have vacancies, we have storefronts that are struggling still, and I think it's the city can take a proactive approach. And they have an economic development department, and I think they're working on some of these issues, which is working with property owners, landowners, landlords, and trying to come up together with a plan and proposition on how to repurpose some of these areas, to make them functional, to make them more appealing for people to sit and visit and stay longer at some of these places. I went recently on Settler's Way, which is a place that I frequent quite often, and they have cute little shops. And what they've done is kind of made seating areas and pocket parks and things like that. So there is a site and a Ford and a plan of trying to repurpose and redesign some of these places to make it appealing for people to come and sit and shop and enjoy their time.
Scott Schultz.
So a few years back, the city did a study where we brought a consultant in, and they helped us understand what Sugar Land was going to look like 10, 15, 20, and even 30 to 40 years out. And so when looking at that information, when you're talking about redeveloping and repurposing different areas, you take that information because we know what the city's going to look like 20 years from now. And using that information and with the public-private partnerships that we discussed earlier, are opportunities to repurpose these areas and get the most use out of them as we can.
And finally, William Ferguson.
The last thing you want is the government to decide and dictate what developers can and can't do with private property. With that said, the city of Sugar Land is very flexible. We listen to the people, we listen to the developers, and we take all of that in, and we are always adjusting, especially as I heard earlier, planning, zoning, that committee is priceless for this discussion right now. Also, our land use plans, there is always flexibility in that. However, at the end of the day, we, the people, decide what will and won't go into our city. I think that's very important. But I think it's paramount that even though the city has an idea, it all goes back to what the people want. And if the people don't want to use a particular store or service, we need to be as flexible as possible to allow that change in the near future.
Okay. Continued economic development is very important for any city. What are your plans to attract and retain businesses in Sugar Land? And Farah, we'll start with you.
As I'm visiting with residents during this campaign, it becomes very clear to me that we have amazing resources right here in the city. We have business leaders and retired business leaders that have information and access to resources about what we can do to bring in new businesses. I talked about technology and innovation companies. We need to tap them. They should be talking to our economic development department. They should be talking to all the department heads about what they see are the trends of business coming into Sugar Land. I don't want us to look at a Department of Labor report a year later to tell us what are the hot jobs and what are the hot businesses. They have their ears to the ground. So we have amazing people to do that. The other thing is having a flexible developer code and a process for developers to come in and build the product that's really ripe for what we need now in the city. And the staff is also looking at that. The staff is also seeing what are the things that we need in the city and then kind of market and telegraph that to developers who are the right fit for all of these developments.
Thank you. Scott Schultz.
Okay, well, I agree 100% that we need to attract as much of the great businesses as we can. But in order to do that, we have to make sure that, one, our infrastructure will support it. Mobility doesn't become an issue because if you own a business, the last thing you want is somebody not to be able to get into it because the traffic is too bad. And then, once again, working with the public and private partnerships. Make it easier for these entities to actually come here versus more red tape and make it more difficult. So if you can solve the infrastructure problems, mobility, and make sure that they have an easy ingress egress, and make it easier to open the business here, I think that'd be a great attraction.
William, what are your thoughts?
The EDC we have in place now is responsible, as a member of our decision process, is responsible for, and I'm going to give you some reasons, Smart Financial. Had EDC not been a part of that, our approach to economic development, Smart Financial wouldn't be standing right now. If they were not a part of Constellation Field even today, as council's still making decisions just this past week related to how do we retain certain businesses. Our program that is in place for economic development is solid. It's funded and it's focused on what is most essential for the people. We want, as I stated earlier, opportunities for everyone. And sometimes you have to get out of the way and kind of help them along, and we're really, really good at that. And we do it now, and we won't stop because we all have a dream for this community, and it's growing and getting more and more beautiful every day.
Larry Laboue.
Yes, I think we need to continue to work with EDC. I've been to many EDC meetings, and they do do great work. But we need to continue that relationship with them. And we do need to bring in more young professionals into our city with their technology. We have the University of Houston right here in our backyard with one of the greatest technologies around. Their technology center is fabulous, and they're working with businesses in our community now. But we need to expand that, reach out to some of these other businesses, and like I said, bring these young professionals in here with their businesses and continue with the EDC as we do it today. Thank you.
Okay, panel, candidates. What do you see as the key environmental issue facing Sugar Land? And what do you think should be Sugar Land City Council's role in addressing it? And Scott, I'm starting with you.
So in my current profession, we work a lot with environmental controls in the construction industry. And our biggest, and I think it should be everybody's biggest goal, is a reduction of your carbon footprint, of a reduction of carbon gas. The biggest way to do that is to reduce vehicle usage, use electric vehicles. And I think that if we were to look at the carbon footprint of Sugar Land, it would probably be pretty immense with all the traffic that we have coming through here with our major thoroughfares. So there could be incentives that could be done. It could be an education process on how to reduce the carbon emissions. You could even go with incentives to purchase electric vehicles if somebody wanted to do so. Whether that's the city government's place, I'm not sure, but those are some of the things that you can do.
William Ferguson, key environmental issue.
Well, we can certainly talk about vehicles. We can talk about chemical plants. We can talk about a lot. My biggest concern environmentally is simply the Brazos River. It has a history of meandering for six miles, Oyster Creek and back. Along the Brazos River, there's approximately $13 to $14 billion worth of appraised property in Sugar Land. I can't imagine anything more catastrophic to our community should we not manage our expectations of the river and how we protect our community from that river. That is most likely, here in the next few months, once it starts raining again, we'll get to see its power once again. So that would be my key environmental concern.
Larry Laboue.
I think my key environmental is the flooding, working on the Brazos River, like I said before, with the Corps of Engineers and figuring that out. But I also agree with Scott on the emissions. We really need to look at that in this city because we are growing. We need to look at ways to get around from place to place. We have all these great facilities around, and some of them are, quite frankly, hard to get to, whether we use the trolley system, whether we use electric cars, like he mentioned. Those are some of the things we need to look at so our citizens don't have to get in their car and drive. They can hop on a trolley, go to the park, they can hop on a trolley and go to Constellation, hop on one and go to Smart Financial. It just makes it very simple for them, and that's just things we just really need to start looking at going forward. Thank you.
Farah Ahmed, what is your environmental priority?
There are quite a few, actually. We've mentioned before about flooding and the protection of our homes and our neighborhoods is very critical. But if you notice on the city website and things and programs that they have right now, is the conservation of our resources is very important to the city, and that is its water conservation policy. And the fact that we have water treatment plants, we've seen our water bill go up, we are now in an area where we can't use groundwater, we have to use surface water. And so it is so critical that we look at conservation programs that help our residents. You get a free inspection of your water sprinkler system to see if you're wasting water. On top of that, it would be great to have some kind of an incentive or rebate program for citizens that take the extra care in terms of water conservancy. I think it's something that the city has always put forefront for our residents, and I think that our residents appreciate it, especially when we have a cost impact on our wallet.
Okay, William Ferguson, the next question goes to you for starters. Sugar Land has a longstanding reputation as a place that celebrates and respects the diversity of its residents. What would you do to ensure that the city council continues to build upon this strength?
There's nothing greater than our diversity, if I may. I need to have a T-shirt made that says, "Diversity is our superpower." As you look at the census results from just a few years ago, you'll realize that about 38% of our community is white, about 38% of our community is Asian, about 7% to 8% of our community is black. Here's what's so important when you read those numbers. There is not one member that I know of, or I would root them out, there is not one member of any group in that census that doesn't want the best for the other members of the group because we are a fabulous community. We fight for each other, we work for each other. And if you follow our lives, especially on council, we are everywhere, always, with everyone, doing everything. And we take their values very important, just like we hope they take and respect our values. And that is what makes Sugar Land so amazing and sweet.
Thank you. Diversity of your residents, what do you think, Larry Laboue?
I think we're very diverse right now. We have a great population, very equal population out there. I think one of the things we need to do is inclusion. We need to start including the residents more. Inclusion is huge with me. I work with Fort Ben Special Olympics, and inclusion is one of our main things, getting these kids acclimated out in the real world, bringing other athletes in to compete with them. Inclusion is huge, and that is one of the things we really need to start focusing on, to include all people. Thank you.
Thank you. Farah Ahmed.
We've heard this over and over before, and it is very true. Our strength is in our diversity. We're the most diverse city, probably in the most diverse county in the country, and that is our strength. That attracts businesses, companies, residents, families. The city can always do more, and it's doing amazing work right now, which is to celebrate that diversity, to engage with the different communities. We have cultural festivals, international festivals. The Kite Festival was something that was new like 10 years ago. You didn't see something like that. And really, it's a way to include people from all cultures, to come in for these amenities and parks and events that we have in the city. And I think also to communicate and engage. We need to make sure that we consistently engage with the different communities and that they're well represented on our boards and our commissions and our task force.
Thank you. Scott Schultz, what are your thoughts?
So our diversity in Sugar Land is wonderful. I'm very proud of it, and it's celebrated often, and it needs to continue to be celebrated. And we do need to work on inclusiveness and make sure that everybody has the same opportunities across the board. But what I can say is, in the 28 years that I was with the city, that we celebrated our diversity, we embraced it, and we worked as well as anybody else could have with it. We need to continue to do that.
Our youth of today will be tomorrow's leaders. How can the city of Sugar Land cultivate meaningful, action-based leadership opportunities for youth and young adults in our community? Good question. Larry, I'm starting with you.
It's a good question. Like I said before, we have the University of Houston right here. Those are young adults that we need to continue to work with. The technology there is amazing. We need to start bringing some of these young professionals in, like I said before. Bring them into the community, get them involved, figure out what their likes and dislikes are, and start working that. We have great resources right here, and we just need to continue to work with those and bring those into the city for the youth to make this a greater city.
Farah Ahmed, your thoughts?
Well, young people do like technology and innovation. And Larry had mentioned before, is, you know, we have this amazing synergy. We've got three technology hubs right around the Sugar Land area. We've got the UVA Sugar Land Department of Technology, we have the Rees Technical Center, which is Fort Ben ISD, and then we have the State Technical College just outside of Sugar Land. And these are the places that you're going to attract young people. They are interested in developing and starting their own businesses. They are interested in gaming and cryptocurrency and all kinds of things like that. And so we have to think of events and programs and policies that would attract the things that they are interested in doing right now. I think there's tremendous opportunity for the city to do that. And the city just actually started its own Department of Innovation. So what it's doing is really kind of encouraging its own employees to develop apps and ideas and technological programs and bring them into fruition and help them along the way. That's something that we can do for our youth also.
Scott, leadership opportunities for our youth?
So within the city, there's a group called the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, which we call it MIAC for short. And it's a group of teens that are interested in leading and in governing as they get older. And so programs like that, the police department has the Teen Academy, which is a mini police department for teenagers, so they can learn about law enforcement within the city. So we need to continue to have programs like that, bringing these youngsters in and showing them what leadership is all about. And even, you know, creating more programs like that, bringing them in, is a great idea.
William Ferguson, close us out on this topic.
So when I was first elected a year and a half ago, one of my first meetings on Zoom was the Mayor's Advisory Council. And I thought, or what was so interesting is, I'm thinking, why is he putting a bunch of young people on this discussion platform? And then I realized, once we were 10 minutes into it, he's fostering leadership. I mean, this is awesome. Okay, so let us never forget what we're doing right now, right here. We're deciding for our kids' futures. Yeah, it's great that I'm 54 and I can make tomorrow a little better for me, but the truth is, this is all about our kids. This is about our grandkids. We want billionaires to come out of this city. We want those billionaires to give back. We're going to get millionaires because we're in Sugar Land. We're going to raise our kids well. We want them to be leaders, not only back in education, but we want them to be leaders into the community. And that is, I'm so glad Scott brought that up. The mayor's program is already doing a great job of that. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Farah Ahmed. Although Sugar Land is known for its quality public safety services, the U.S. is facing a nationwide shortage for first responders. What, if anything, should the city be doing to recruit and retain exceptional if anything, should the city be doing to recruit and retain exceptional fire, emergency, and police personnel? Farah?
I think we also, am I on? I think what's so important is you have to have a culture of welcoming those that are the best trained in our law enforcement and first responder community. And I think we have that. We have a culture and a community that welcomes people that choose to serve this profession, this profession to keep us safe. And I think we owe it to them. If you want to attract the best and the brightest, you want to pay for that best and the brightest. That means you want to have wages that are competitive. You want to have benefits that are competitive. You want to have training that's available. And what's really key important, I mean, you hear from law enforcement officers, it's not just the pay, it's the community and culture that embraces them. And having community engagement is so valuable for attracting the best and talented to our city. And I want to make sure that the officers and those that are first responders have that community engagement opportunity.
Thank you. Scott Schultz.
So public safety in Sugar Land, they, the police officers, the firefighters, the paramedics, they are the best of the best. They are recruited from far and wide. And generally, there are a lot of, there's a lot of competition to actually get hired on and just within the Sugar Land Police Department. Problem that we face is not necessarily bringing good candidates here because good candidates want to work for us. The problem that we face is we can have 250 applicants. And when they go through the process, because the city of Sugar Land is, is very strict on the employees that they have, by time we go through the process, out of 250 applicants, we may only hire two, two police officers out of that. Okay. So, and those are the best of the best because that's, that's how particular the police department is. What we have to do better at is attracting people to want to be in the law enforcement profession.
Thank you. William, recruiting and retaining exceptional public safety services?
So I think this is a very unique forum because you have two police officers sitting up here in front of you right now, answering a question about public service. I like that. With that said, I want to make something perfectly clear. Back to Scott's point, we have the best now. We will have the best tomorrow. My confidence comes from this one factor. And I heard the mayor say it one day and it dawned on me. If you, as a police officer or a firefighter in particular, will do what you're trained to do, we will take care of the rest. In a time of social media and concern, we want our officers and our firefighters to thrive because we respect how difficult their job is. We review their compensation every year. We have committees for that, task force for that. That happens regardless. But our community loves our public service and we want them to know, you go do what you're trained to do and we'll deal with the rest of it. And it works really well.
Okay, Larry Laboue, your thoughts?
Yes, I think we have a great police force. They do a great job. I've talked to many of them and had conversations with many of them. The morale seems to be okay. We need to continue working with them. We need to continue to have programs for them as well. Programs such as going and teaching them the different cultures, the different communities, the different aspects out there. I'll take one real quick for example. A special needs person, a special needs person, and Scott will back me up on this, I'm sure, a special needs person and a drug addict look the same. I mean, they act the same. They won't look at you. They scratch, they move around. They, they look like a drug addict. So we need to train these police officers and continue to have these different programs for them to reach out and understand the culture that they're dealing with. Thank you.
Okay, each candidate will be allotted 90 seconds for their answer to this question. It's a pretty hefty one. Sugar Land is in a period of tremendous growth and opportunity, but is also beginning to face the challenges of an aging transportation and mobility infrastructure. How do you think the city should balance these competing demands when it comes to capital improvement expenditures? And Scott, I'm starting with you.
You're right, that is a hefty one. So the infrastructure is of one of the most important things, in my opinion, that can be worked on. If our roads and our bridges aren't travelable, then the, everything shuts down. So we need to maintain our infrastructure to the point to where, to where it needs to be categorized and fixed, what needs to be fixed, realize what needs to be fixed in the future, make plans for that as well, and set aside the funds to actually do that as well.
William Ferguson?
Our government partners, Tech dot, if you've ever tried to manage Tech dot, good luck. Okay, so our government partners, our state, our county, the federal, we all play a very similar role in funding road improvements, bridge improvements, mobility improvements. With that said, locally, we have to identify those. We not only identify problems we have on our roadways and our bridges and we do it regularly. If you've not seen this, we also walk our sidewalks and we can tell you, I could put a graph on the, on the board and I could show you where every rise in the sidewalk is anywhere in the city of Sugar Land. We are looking at the infrastructure regularly. We have teams that that's all they do. Then we fall back on our relationships. We go to Tech dot, we go to the state. Good example, we brought, I brought up University Boulevard widening. Those of you that live here, you know, in the afternoon, try to go home to Telfair or New Territory on University at 59. Not easy right now because the area has grown so much. We're starting a widening project. Thankfully, the county is a partner of ours. The county is helping us. Our monies that we're using came from our, our CIP, our, our bond money that we've already been, the people have already said, we want this done. So all we're doing is directing through our partners and the funds we've been given in an essential way.
Larry Laboue, what's your take on this?
I think we need to continue what we're doing, continue to improve the roads. But we need to actually go out and do what we say we're going to do. Work on those roads, work on those sidewalks. So people can get around easily. That's one of the biggest things here. Our traffic signals, make sure they're all synced. A lot of times they're not synced and that's going to cause it. As we grow, those are big concerns we have to look at is traffic signals and how people get around. And going back to the mobility, we need to figure out some way to get people from one place to the other without them actually getting, having to get in their car. We have all these facilities around here, but we need to get them from place to place and get them there safely. Thank you.
Farah Ahmed, I suspect you've put some thought into this subject.
Absolutely. The key thing is also, we want to talk about smart growth. I mean, what stresses our infrastructure is our development and growth of the city. And I think planning that growth is very important. It's also important to understand that we also have done a huge mobility study plan with lots of citizens serving on that task force. And it's a combination of roads and hike and bike trails. But definitely, it's very clear that it's going to be our roads and our sidewalks that are going to take much of our funding and money. And I think that's always going to be a priority. If you ever sit through a budget meeting and you have these CIP projects and they plan out five to 10 years in advance, and you can see the neighborhoods bit by bit that are going to be looked at and they're going to be the potholes, the, the storm drains and all the sidewalks are all going to be fixed in what year and what time period. And then looking for the funding to do all of that. And I think the city is really still trying to balance all this. It's still very challenging. And then you throw in traffic in there too. So you're using high-tech technology to adjust with the traffic flows and to make sure that you don't have those backups. So I would definitely want to promote a smart growth policy before we even get to the point where we overstress our infrastructure.
Okay, next one. We all want a nice quality of life. And it's a key consideration for employers when choosing where to locate a business and for people when choosing where to live. What should the city council's role be in addressing quality of life issues for its residents? And William Ferguson will start with you.
So as we discuss, how do we get the businesses here, what's best here, I will tell you, those of you that don't know the condition currently in 2022 regarding office space, go to the energy corridor on I-10 and you will realize the vacancy issues they face right now because office space is just not a demand asset anymore. So for Sugar Land, in Sugar Land's case, we want these great businesses here. But to be candid with you, we need to entice them, if I may, through our EDC. We entice them. We also encourage them to stay with whatever we can do to keep them, whether it's in town center or it's over here with Slumber Shea or FLUR. We've got a great relationship out there. We're doing all of those things now to retain them for our citizens to have jobs locally instead of going outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Laboue, what do you think about quality of life?
I think we need to continue to expound on it. Like I said, bring in these younger technology professionals into, into these businesses. Start working with our local businesses to improve the quality of life here throughout the city. Again, we have resources here. We just need to work on them and, and bring these people in and continue to quality of life that everybody deserves, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Farah?
I truly want Sugar Land to be the most pro-business friendly city in Texas. There's no reason why we cannot be the startup capital of Texas. We need to attract companies. And you know, in the past, we've looked at Fortune 500 companies that bring in 400 employees. Those days are gone. We are, we need to look at small businesses and mid-sized businesses and attract them and make sure that they survive and thrive here in the city. We can look at tax abatements. We can look at incentives. We can look at adjusting some of our use policies and some of our development codes to make it easy for these businesses to actually run their business in a very successful way. You know, we had issues where you could have outdoor seating. Outdoor seating was very limited before COVID and the city has adjusted that and pivoted with that. And I think, again, attracting technology, innovative businesses, we should have accelerators. We should have incubators here. This is the place to do. A diverse population and with our three technology hubs, we really should be the most pro-business friendly city.
Okay, Scott?
So balancing quality of life with our residents versus businesses has always been a top priority of the city. It's something that's been paid attention to since day one. A lot of this, of these issues actually fell within the police department when alarms would continuously go off on business and it would wake up residents in the middle of the night. Or when parking at any one given area that is close to residential area would, would snaggle the, the whole area and you couldn't get anywhere. So what, what the police department would do is they had a manager for that area. And those managers were actually tasked with going out and solving these problems between the businesses and the, and the residents that live close to them. So that needs to continue. And as was probably mentioned, that we also need to pay attention to the types of businesses that we're bringing in, what kind of traffic it's going to bring in, what kind of quality of life issues are these businesses going to cause for our residents, and then mitigate those problems before they start.
Okay, with the rapid growth that Sugar Land is experiencing, housing is an ever-increasing challenge. What's your vision for how the city can address access to quality, affordable housing options? And Larry, I'm going to start with you.
Well, like I said before, the housing right now, we don't have a lot of room to continue to expand. So we need to look at other ways to make these houses affordable. There's just a lot of things we need to take a look at and, and, and work on as far as bringing people in to affordable housing. Like I said, there's 3%, maybe 4% left to expand. So we need to start working on the houses that we have now and figuring out ways to make it more affordable. So these young tech professionals will come into our, our city. Thank you.
Farah Ahmed, thoughts?
Definitely, we, you know, as a city, we have about 7% of undeveloped land. And we're getting to the point where we may have to build vertical also. And, you know, the housing shortage is something that we technically cannot control. And we can't control all the pricing of housing too. So that needs to be something to look at, that there's a limit in what we can do. There's such a demand for housing here. But in terms of attracting young professionals, they want to live in condos and townhomes. There are not a lot of people in that particular, when we're talking about young millennials, that are going to buy a house with a beautiful front yard and a backyard. But we have, we have the opportunity to make a development that is really attractive, that is quality, that maintains the values of our homes and neighborhoods. I think that's what people are really worried about, is you don't want to bring in housing or some kind of building product that might impact negatively your neighborhood and your homes.
Scott Schultz, your thoughts?
So the obvious, the obvious answer is multifamily residences, which is apartment complexes. Now, that being said, there's a lot of issues with apartment complexes as well. There's a lot of people that are for apartment complexes within the city and there are a lot of people that are against them. Apartment complexes can bring in, in crime. Apartment complexes can bring in a lot of issues. So with going vertical and, and building the condominiums or apartment complexes, it has to be a very extremely well-thought-out process. The citizens need to be involved and need to have a say in whether that's going to happen or not. Because this is their, this is their residents that we're talking about. So the easiest way to answer that question would be apartment complexes, but that's also the hardest answer to come up with.
William Ferguson, I suspect you've had conversations about this issue?
My goodness. Well, the first part is when you use the term affordable anything right now, okay? We're currently in a 8.5% inflation. Our property, our appraisals have gone through the roof. And so when you use the term affordable, that's a painful subject right now. There are people that have made good money for a long time in our community and realizing that bread is getting expensive. So affordable is probably the key word in what you said. So at some point, the citizens of our community have to realize, how big do you want this city to be? We're 111,000 people. We have, give or take, 7% of land that we can develop out. How big do you want this city to get? Do you want to be a million population? Probably not. So at some point, you have to go, let's make the best of what we have at 111,000 people, bring in all the big businesses. If it ends up being multifamily living, that'll come from the people. We respond to the people.
Okay. Now you've all been both informative as well as efficient. So we have a couple of bonus questions and then we'll, and then we will wrap it up with, with closing statements. So first, imagine this, you won this election and you are now at the end of your term as a city council member. Looking back, what would you like people to remember about your term? And Scott, we're going to start with you.
I would like people to look back and be able to say that I communicated, I listened, and I was helpful.
Thank you. William?
I can't go that short. No, I'm just kidding. So after a year and a half of this, I'm, I'm currently not a month away from reelection or not. So my hope is that people remembered, he, he kept us safe, he respected us, and he gave us every possible opportunity he could for everyone. And yeah, we had a lot of fun while we did it.
Thank you. Larry Laboue?
I would like to be remembered as the guy that helped everybody, helped with inclusion, helped all the cultures, all the residents out there, including the businesses, that I was the one that stood up for them and helped them get what they needed and, and flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Farah?
I would love people to remember that I made the best decisions for the community, for the city, for all the right reasons. And also the fact that I wanted to make sure that our city and our citizens had unparalleled community engagement, that the citizens felt welcome and that every door was open to them and all their ideas and opinions, that there was a place at the table for all of them to be heard.
Another kind of personal question. How do you describe your leadership style and how do you plan to create consensus on the city council? I guess we're fittingly going to start with William Ferguson.
My leadership style, that's going to get me in trouble. I'm very direct. I have no, I, I, I have no, I'm not good at drama at all, and I don't coddle well. I'm very direct. So, sometimes it doesn't work out real well, but adults in the room seem to like that they're told the truth, even though it's a little painful sometimes. And as you've seen just today, we're running out of time to improve our kids' futures. I don't have time for drama. If you can't get along, I'm probably going to battle with you a little bit. But what happens is, at the end of the day, you get a bunch of adults with different desires, different backgrounds, and they start talking about the issues with my style. And it works. Sometimes they're a little upset, but they get over it. And I've learned to stay out of the weeds. I got that advice from a great mentor of mine, and that is, stay focused, but be direct.
Larry, leadership style?
I'm very direct. I like to stay out in front of things, but I work with everybody. I listen to everybody's opinion. I appreciate everybody's opinion on the council or wherever it's at, in the boardroom where I serve on the different boards. Same thing, listen to everybody, get everybody's input, and have everybody going in their same direction for the same common good. Thank you.
Farah, leadership and building consensus?
I think it's so important that we have transparent leadership. Transparency is very important. I think those that serve in government should always be held accountable. And for me, even though I'm a lawyer, the other hat I wear is I'm an advocate, and I have to be persuasive, but I also wear the other hat as a mediator. And I think that you always need to stress to find that common ground, to work together for projects and ideas that are the best for the city, and to keep everyone together. And that, to me, is the best way to build consensus.
Scott, leadership and consensus building?
So, my leadership style, actually, I've asked myself that question numerous times, and it took going through like an 18-month course to where I could actually identify my leadership style. And actually, I lead through relationships. I build relationships, and then that also leads to the consensus building. Now, consensus doesn't mean it's always your way. It doesn't mean you're always the one that gets your way. That goes both ways. So, as William said, you get the adults in the room, sit down, talk about it, you weigh out all your options, and you work from there.
Now, we'll be wrapping it up. Each candidate has one minute for a closing statement, and we're going to start with Farah Ahmed.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Ismaili Council and Fox 26 and League of Women Voters to hold this forum. It's so important that us as leaders be here to answer these questions, to show what is it that our vision and view is for this wonderful city and the future. I've brought my family here. I'll retire here. I was telling somebody that I've met my husband here, and it's now the senior recreation center, so we're going to do probably full circle here in Sugar Land. But I think it is so important that we build a strong foundation for our city. I've lived here for 32 years, and I'm excited about the future for the city. I see this city as a place for our kids and grandkids to start their businesses and to have their families here live in Sugar Land.
Thank you. Scott, what about you?
So, as I mentioned earlier, I've spent over half my life serving the citizens of Sugar Land through the police department, and that is something that I wish to continue to do. I feel I have a servant's heart, and I want to help people. I've lived in the city for 26 years. I've raised my children here, and my children want to raise their children here. And for those reasons, it's one of, was why I want to lead this community.
Thank you. William?
I would say this to every citizen in Sugar Land, if you're watching and listening, hopefully you are. If you love Sugar Land the way it is today, it's because of the team of people, an expansive team of people, that have done all that they can to imagine the future for you, whether you were involved in it or not. But my challenge to you is, if you're happy in Sugar Land, you feel safe, respected, and you've got opportunities in Sugar Land. I would ask that you consider re-electing me on May 7th, because we will continue to do those things for you and enjoy life, and God bless Sugar Land.
Larry, Larry Labou, your turn.
Yes, I love Sugar Land. I've enjoyed it. I like the way it's going. I have five grandkids now. They're raised out here, continue, and hopefully they'll be raising theirs, and this city will continue as it is right now. I look forward to serving the people in a new leadership, so, thank you.
Well, I would like to thank all of you, speaking on my behalf, and I would thank Greg as well. This has been very informative, and I appreciate your dedication to our community. Greg, do you want to say anything?
Mary Jane, I think there was one clear winner today. It's the people of Sugar Land. We have four high-quality, worthy candidates. There will be no losers. But that said, in closing, we would like to thank the candidates for taking time to participate in today's forum. Sugar Land residents undoubtedly benefited from the opportunity to hear each of you and your unique views and perspectives on a variety of issues. We'd also like to remind all of our viewers that early voting for the Sugar Land City Council and other local offices runs from April 25th to May 3rd, and Election Day is May 7th. On behalf of the Ismaili Council for the Southwestern USA, the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and Fox 26 Houston, thank you for joining us today, and have a great day.
One more little closing coming up. On behalf of the Ismaili Chamathkana Center, as well as our partners, the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters Houston, and of course, Fox 26, I'd like to extend our sincere appreciation to all the candidates and moderators for a truly informative forum. We are fortunate for their time and efforts to ensure that Sugar Land residents go to the polls as informed citizens. We also extend our gratitude to all the volunteers who worked diligently behind the scenes to make today's forum a reality. We'd also like to thank all of you, the attendees, and the viewers online who have joined us here today. We will offer a guided tour of the center, starting in the lobby right after the program ends. In observance of the month of Ramadan, we will not be serving refreshments. However, we do have to-go boxes available, so please grab one on your way out. Thank you, and good afternoon.